Candy, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. We have President Mayor Moss, Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Van Sant, Mayor Pro Tem Young, Councilmember Primmel, and absent is Councilmember Running Ball.
Thank you. With y'all stand, join me in a moment of prayer and the pledge. Lord, today we're thankful for this hot sunny summer day. There are those that couldn't appreciate it, and we pray for them and their needs also. We thank you for the country we live in. We thank you for the city we live in. We pray for our leaders, that they'll make decisions that are right for everyone. Thank you for the service of this council and this staff. I pray that we make decisions that are right for the citizens of this city. We ask your blessings on this meeting, all that we have, all that we are, and all that we ever hope to be. We owe it all to you. In your name we pray. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could get Dr. Bone to come up, please.
Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, we intend to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. Whereas the superintendent of schools must work closely with the board trustees, parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational region we want for our students. And whereas Dr. Susan Bone has been selected as the Region Two Superintendent of the Year based on leadership, relationships, school improvement, and fiscal management. Now therefore, I, Mayor Willough Park, hereby declare my appreciation, our appreciation to Dr. Bone, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing her dedication and hard work leading an education system that meets the needs of students and creates lifelong learners. Could you join me in applause?
Jennifer Lofton and Jennifer Taylor.
Dr. Bone, join us over here, please. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. And whereas the Alito Independent School District Board of Trustees has been recognized as the Region Two School Board of the Year, demonstrating outstanding dedication and rendering ethical service to the students of Alito ISD. And whereas the Alito ISD Board of Trustees will now advance to the state level for consideration as the State Board of the Year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Doyle Moss, do hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Alito Independent School District School Board, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and work with them to mold an education system that meets, that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. Thank you.
Candy, there are no public comments?
No, sir.
Item number one, to take action, to accept the letter of resignation of City Secretary Alicia Smith and approve a severance agreement between the city and Mrs. Smith. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation of City Secretary Alicia Smith and approve of the severance package.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two is appoint interim city secretary, and we'd like to recommend Ms. Candy Scott. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Candy Scott as our interim city secretary.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, discussion of preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 period. Mr. Grimes.
We, at the request of Mayor Pro Tem Young, we put this on the agenda in case there was any further discussion from our last presentation. We've received really no substantive comments from anyone. I didn't know if council wanted to have any further deliberations on the preliminary. Nothing has changed from what we presented a few weeks ago. I will tell you, we did get our preliminary, not a preliminary, our certified tax rolls in. Our tax rate was based off of a number of around 590 million. Our taxable non-frozen value that we received Friday afternoon was 610,813,515, which is significantly higher. That is good because we'll end up lowering the tax rate even more. Again, we're, even though we're lowering the tax rate, we will go, there will be some more taxes paid. I'm going to recommend that we table items four and five. We do not have all of our information from the CAD yet to vote on a proposed tax rate, and without the information to vote on proposed tax rate, we cannot publish a notice. And so that's, that's, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but I wanted to give you that, that update as far as our budget goes.
Any other questions on item number three?
Yes, I did have one question. We discussed that we did get the transfer from water fund to the general fund to nothing this year.
Yes.
Do we, we still do have some of that contributing to salaries. Is that correct? To staff salaries?
The water fund?
Yes.
No. To what, to the enterprise fund, yes.
Okay. Some of the salaries are being funded not straight from the general fund, but from--
Yes, 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 yes.
Just wanted to confirm that that--
Yes.
That was where we were. So, okay.
And that's because you spend your time--
Right.
On water, right?
Because with the massive project we have of the, well, getting the water line up and going, and I know we'll see the update later, that is one of the major projects we'll have at.
Yes, and you, and you'll have an equally significant project out of wastewater here in a couple of months, probably, hopefully. Derek will give us an update on that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we need a motion to table four and five?
Uh, yes, sir.
Could we have a motion to, can we do both at the same time?
Pat, you have a problem with that?
Yeah.
Need a motion to table items four and number five, please.
I'll make a motion to table items four and five at a later date to describe by the city manager.
We have a motion?
Second.
That's good.
All in favor? Thank you.
I expect that to be on, at the next meeting on August the 10th, but I want to make sure we get that from the CAD first.
Item number six, to discuss, consider, and act on the proposals received for employee health benefits, including health insurance, and act on awarding a contract for employee health benefits, including health insurance. Mr. Grimes.
I have Nancy Johnson with Tommy Morris Agency to present our, sorry Nancy, I was on the wrong agenda item there for my staff memo, to present the, the results of the RFP that we've done for health insurance, as well as dental and vision. And Nancy, I'll let you kind of go through what you got.
Okay. All right. Well, thank y'all very much for having me here today. Let's see if I'm far enough to do this. We put out a request for proposals in the last month or so, asking for sealed bids to come in on your, all of your employee benefits, which are health, dental, vision, and your life insurance. We did not get any bids other than the incumbents. We're all, of course, putting in bids. The first page here that we show is the health insurance, which is currently with Blue Cross. Y'all have a triple option plan. The city pays for the least expensive plan, which is the bottom one on this schedule, and it is a 7% increase this year. Overall, the composite increase of these three plans is, is less than 7%, because you've got more people like in that 1,500 plan. So the composite increase was about 6.5 or something like that, 6.9. I'm not sure exactly what. But the city's cost is actually 7%. Y'all have had very good luck with Blue Cross, I think. We, we don't hear from many of your employees with issues, which is typical for a Blue Cross plan. But every now and then we do, and we, and we're happy to help them with whatever we can with those issues. You also have for your dental and vision, you're with a company called Ameritas, which is a company that specializes in dental and vision. You've got a 4% increase in your dental rates, but your vision rates are flat. And again, nothing is changing on their plans. They're exactly what you have now, and we don't ever hear any complaints from your people. And so I think, I think your employees appreciate those benefits. And then lastly, on your life insurance, there, which is currently with Blue Cross or Dearborn is their, their life company, there are no changes to any of those rates. The city provides each employee with $50,000 in coverage. And then for the voluntary life insurance that's available to employees, there's no changes in those rates either. So basically, you had a very good renewal. Anytime we can have a, a health renewal, it's, it's single digits. These days, we're happy to see that. So 7% for the city's cost was good. I, I tell most of my clients, budget 10% every year, and you'll be pleased some years, and other, other years you won't. But it's going to, it's definitely going to go up every year, unfortunately. Are there any questions? Well, we appreciate your business, and Brian certainly knows how to get in touch with me, because I hear from him through--
Yes. I can tell you on behalf of the staff, we are pleased with the health insurance, and we are thankful that y'all provide that as a benefit to us. And, you know, we've enjoyed the relationship we've had with Blue Cross Blue Shield for, I guess, going on, this will be the third or fourth year?
Fourth.
Fourth. And so it's, it's a far superior product to what was here previously.
And we are not a Blue Cross broker. We're an independent broker, so. But, but Blue Cross is by far has the majority of our business too, because they're the easiest to deal with. We should all of you know that we have insurance.
What a concept.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not always sure if that's good or bad, you know, because sometimes I think they let things slip through that maybe they should pay it, but they're still cheaper there by the way, so.
Okay, we have a recommendation in the packet. Do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Willow Park City Council direct staff to renew the city health insurance and benefits plan, including health, vision, and dental with the providers that have been recommended by staff, and direct staff to work with Nancy Johnson of the Tommy Morris Agency to broker those benefits.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Item number seven, update on the Fort Worth Water Project.
Preston Dillard. Mr. Preston Dillard with Half &amp; Associates. He's presented a number of times. I think the last couple of weeks have been pretty exciting, or at least moving. And so I'll let you, let you give an update on where we are, and where we are currently right now today, this afternoon.
Yeah, I don't think it's been quite as exciting as the Big 12, but closer. So appreciate the opportunity to update y'all this evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. As usual, I'll go through all three components of the Fort Worth Water Project, give you a brief update on schedule and status, and then to answer any questions you may have. Starting off first is the component that goes from Fort Worth to Willow Park, mainly the pipeline component, but it also includes the current meter station to get water from Fort Worth going. Mountain Cascade is our contractor for that one. On July 16th, roughly 11 days ago, they let us know that they were not going to be on schedule. Obviously, that was bad news and a bit of surprise. But as Brian alluded to, since that time, there's been another of activities that half of our team members, including Derek and city staff, have been working on to see what we can do to close that gap on the projected schedule to get it going as soon as possible. Initially, the specific reason they gave us for the delay in schedule was due to a delay in the delivery of the flow meter for the project. I think that was related to the COVID microchip situation. But we were able to get on the horn in Fort Worth. We were aware that they stopped those particular meters. And kudos to your new friends in Fort Worth. They are allowing us to use a meter. Once the meter we're purchasing arrives, we'll ship that back to Fort Worth. So the meter's in place now and ready to go. But once we solved that issue, more issues in terms of delay arose, and basically those delays fall into two categories. First is related to getting the pipeline physically and mechanically ready to pass water safely. So that's related to some testing components. We related, we worked with Mountain Cascade to try to shorten that schedule. So they've already passed the pressure testing that's required on the pipeline. And then yesterday, they began the process of dechlorinating the pipeline, which is to clean it up, get it ready for transmitting local water. And to prove that it passes the cleaning, you have to do these sampling and send them to Fort Worth for them to do some analysis on those. So they've sent the first samples from that testing this afternoon in Fort Worth. There'll be more sampling done tomorrow. So we have to get a positive result from those tests, you know, that they show that the pipes are clean before we can turn the valve on. But fingers crossed, that will happen Wednesday and Thursday. And so we're currently looking at being able to turn on the temporary supply of water from Fort Worth either Thursday or Friday this week. So we'll take a prayer, keep our fingers crossed. The other area--
They're doing the back tea samples every thousand feet. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
The other area of delay, if you will, which basically is now going to decouple the project at the two finish lines, if you will, and that involves the communication from the flow meter site to Fort Worth. The idea is that the flow meter, through a SCADA system, communicates the data the flow meter is reading to the city of Fort Worth. And of course, that's important for two reasons. One, their operational situation, and two, so they can provide a bill to you to pay for the water. So once again, your new friends in Fort Worth are working with us very diligently to try to get this thing going. So they've agreed to do a period of manual meter reading, so that if we pass the, the testing this week on the pipeline and get things going, they'll manually read that meter until we get the SCADA system up, up and running. And the latest schedule for Mountain Cascade for that will be August 27th. So hopefully this Friday, water's coming into the city. Then August 27th, we'll finish out the project completely. And August 27th represents basically a one-month delay from their contract schedule. So that's the update on the Mountain Cascade project. The second component is the pipeline that basically goes from Willow Park over Hudson Oaks. Wildstone is our contractor on that. We're still looking at an August 26th completion date for that. As you've probably noticed, most of their work is complete. They're kind of down to finishing up two different bore components of the pipeline, right here around Ranch House Road, actually, one underneath, and then one just a little bit west of there. I know that they put in pipeline on Friday, I believe, so I think they're about ready to button that up. One thing that may change that finish date of August 26th is the actual testing of that pipeline, as we just discussed about on Mountain Cascade. It would be much easier for them to test that pipeline and clean it out once the pump station is up and running next year. So we'll be working with Brian, and of course, Hudson Oaks as well, to figure out if we want to extend that deadline and have them come back next year to finish the testing, or if there's another way we can get that done. So I think the construction work will definitely be done by August 26th. It's a testing part of the delay. Last but not least is the pump station project that we referred to. That's both the pump station and permanent meter station at the El Chico site, but also the meter station at Hudson Oaks. So Mila Contracting is our contractor for that. We did get approval from Water Development Board to approve their contract. We've already had the pre-construction meeting with Mila a couple of weeks ago. We're starting to receive their shop drawings and middles. They're, they're starting work with their suppliers. And I heard from them today that they plan to start moving equipment onto the site Thursday. I told Brian to stay out of Mountain Cascade's way. And then they anticipate starting to do some clearing and some of the tree cutting on August 2nd. And assuming it's okay with, with Mayor Moss, we're, we're going to issue the notice preceding them officially for August 2nd. The contract allows them 274 calendar days to complete the project. So if you extend that out, that's a completion date of May 3rd, 2022. With that, open up to any questions for you.
When will we know for sure the testing that, I guess you'll be in touch with Brian Friday if the, if everything's good?
Yes, sir. Ryan, I think I've moved up on Brian's speed dial, maybe third place or so.
You're behind Mayor Moss.
Okay, all right. But, but yes, we're, Mountain Cascade has given us daily schedule updates. And of course, we're also in communication constantly with Fort Worth. They're the ones who will actually do the testing and tell us yea or nay on that. So as soon as we find out something, we're sending down to Brian.
Good. That's half a million a day, is, or is that what he did?
Yes, 500,000.
500,000 a day.
Yes, sir.
Good. Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, Preston, on the third component, the pump and meter station, you had said on August 2nd, you're looking to do some tree removal. That's on the El Chico site, correct?
Yes. And I think per previous direction from council through Brian, we're, we're going to preserve a few of the trees on that site that are existing to help kind of act as a landscaping screen. The other ones do are in the way now.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions for Preston, but along those lines, given that we are delayed a week or two or several weeks, are we having any issues? We just hit pretty hot, hot, dry times. And are we having any issues with our water supply right now? We're meeting the demand?
We're, we're meeting demand, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not gonna--
Not going to say it's not challenging, but yes.
I'm not going to say it's easy. I'm not Nate, and I'm not Chase, so I can say it's easier for my chair. But we're meeting the demand. I think the concern's always going to be if you get three consecutive or four consecutive days of 1.5, 1.5, and then a 1.6 or something like that, that becomes a challenge. But I think we're, we're fine.
Okay.
Much better than we were last summer. Is that correct?
She's not, you know, panicking over there. So yeah, that's a good sign.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
Item number eight, update on wastewater treatment plant. Derek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be a lot briefer than Preston.
Thank you.
As you know, we're in the planning stage of the, the, the project process as far as the way the Water Development Board sets it up. And that includes the preliminary engineering and the environmental, right-of-way acquisition. And the two key milestones for that right now are the permit and the environmental. The permit is currently under technical review with the TCQ. I expect that process will probably be complete around the end of the year still, about December of this year. Could be faster, but the way they've been going, it looks like that's probably going to hold. The environmental assessment is, is underway as well. We're waiting on a couple of agencies. We have to send to a multitude of agencies the documentation, and then they review it and send it back. Before we can send it for a finding with the Water Development Board. So we're waiting on the Corps of Engineers and the Texas Historical Commission currently for their responses before we can send that to the TWDV. I expect to get that shortly, but that process, I think, will probably also carry out till about December of this year. So in the meantime, we're working on preliminary design. We're getting proposals for equipment as we speak. And I've got some preliminary pricing on equipment, and I've done a, a new opinion of cost within the last couple of days. And right now, the, the cost is still within the budget that we, that we got from the TWDV. So I don't expect it to, to be over that budget. We'll watch things. As you probably know, I think we've talked about it in, in the recent past, but prices have kind of shot up over the last few months. I think they're leveling off. They may even start coming down, but we'll keep a close eye on that. But right now, it looks like we're in pretty good shape. Once the, technically, we have to wait for the environmental and permitting clearance before we can actually submit anything for design. But we're going to try to have that ready to go as soon as those approvals come in. We'll be, toward the end of the year, we should be ready to, to submit our design.
Any feedback from Tarrant Regional or--
No, we, we've notified them every step of the way. We notified them when we submitted the, the permit most recently. And it's gone through a notice, one notice already. It's about to go through a second notice, but there were no comments as far as I know. We haven't heard anything.
What's the earliest construction would start, estimate?
The earliest? Based on the schedule I just went through, probably early summer of '22 would be the earliest time.
Okay.
Aren't we also going through just the renewal process for the existing plant? And is it, have we had any feedback on that?
We have had no comments on it. It's further along in the process. I would expect to probably get that permit, the draft permit for review, probably within the next couple of months.
Okay.
September timeframe.
Easily by the time we need it.
Yes.
Any other questions for Derek? Thank you, Derek. Item number nine, to discuss and act upon amending certain public comment procedures. Mr. Grimes?
Last year, when we had COVID-19 and the pandemic, I think council, I don't know if it was actual policy, but it was kind of more of informal practice, if you will, where any emailed public comments were read aloud, typically by staff. And so, and that was, that was not a practice that was done pre-COVID-19. So after the COVID-19, and we're kind of, we're coming back to normal, we're going to recommend that any hand, any written or emailed public comments will be acknowledged at that time, and then those comments will be attached to the minutes of that meeting.
Any other questions? We have a motion in the packet. If we could get someone to make a motion to that, please.
I'll make a motion. I move that the city of Willow Park no longer read into the record email or written comments received prior to 5:00 PM of the date of any city council meeting, and that such communications be made available as an attachment to the minutes of said meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
I would assume that if we went into a situation where we were doing online again or had to close down, all we'd have to do is amend that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 10, extension of land exchange agreement between the city and the Willow Park Baptist Church of Texas. Mr. Grimes?
Pat can, can chime in on this. I think we have, all the documents and instruments are ready to go. I think we're just waiting on some signatures. We don't know if we'll have those signatures by July 31. And so we are asking council to extend the, the period about 30 days to August 31. about 30 days to August 31. Is that-
Yeah, not everything's ready, but we've got all the conditions have occurred, and so now it's just putting everything together and getting everybody together to sign the agreement. So just over, at an overabundance of caution, we went ahead and agreed, the church has agreed to sign this if we approve it, to extend the contract date to close another 30 days.
Okay, we have a recommendation in the packet. Could we have someone make a motion, please?
I move that the city of Willow Park extend the land exchange agreement deadline with Willow Park Baptist Church of Texas until August 31st, 2021.
Second.
Do we have a second?
That's the second.
I'm sorry. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 11, we're going to move to the executive session. Item number 12, authorize the city staff to seek proposals through an RFP for a professional service provider to assist in administration services for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund programs through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Mr. Grimes?
The ARPA, which was passed by Congress in 2021, gives the city of Willow Park a certain amount of funding for certain activities, mainly infrastructure projects. Unofficially, I think our amount is $1.2 million. I think that may be off by a couple hundred thousand, but we're looking at getting around $1 million out of this program. Unlike previous COVID funding from last year, where they literally just wrote you a check and you get the, you had to do payroll or whatever with it, it was fairly easy and straightforward as far as administration goes, and there was no engineering at all. This is kind of out of abundance of caution, but should we need administrative professional services, I'd like to go ahead and get y'all's permission to do the RFP. The next agenda item is the exact same, except it's for engineering as well. So we had to separate the two out between admin and engineering.
Okay, we have a recommendation in the packet. Could we have a motion, please?
I move to authorize staff to develop and proceed with a request for proposal for administrative services and compliance with the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 14-
13.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Item number 13, to authorize the city staff to seek proposals through an RFP for a professional service provider to assist in engineering services for the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund programs through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
I move to authorize staff to develop and proceed with a request for proposal for engineering services and compliance with the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 14, an action to approve ordinance 835-21 at an ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing authorization to amend Appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of ordinances by adjusting the water-based rate table to remove the 5/8 meter and setting the 5/8 inch base rate as the 3/4 inch base rate, providing for a penalty, a severability clause, and an effective date. Mr. Grimes?
So this came to our attention, I guess, late last week, early next, early last week. They're all the days run together. When we did the meter change outs, we needed to change the meter size and utility billing software from a 5/8 meter to a 3/4 meter due to the fact that a 5/8 meter no longer exists. The utility billing program automatically moved the base rate up to a 3/4 meter, and this, what resulted is an increase of about $20.86 to some of our customers. We have gone in, and I think Michelle has gone through and amended the accounts of roughly 300 of our customers who were overbilled, and we believe that, you want to come up and walk through that process?
Actually, girl, all we're doing is, the meters that have been changed out between May 15th and June 15th ended up with that extra charge. So all we're doing is, we reversed them, and we're changing the rate so that the 5/8s and the 3/4s, we're getting rid of the 5/8s and we're going strictly to the 3/4 after the 5/8 rate, so.
Thank you. Okay, we have a suggested motion in the packet?
Question on this one. So I understand the glitch between the 5/8s and the 3/4s, but moving forward, the glitch will not be there anymore. It will meter and read correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We will no longer have that interim, that rate that was the 3/4 rate. We are eliminating that old 3/4 rate.
Is that, is that, yes.
Well, the old 3/4 rate's gone and become the 5/8 rate of the-
Yes.
And we go straight from, I think it's in the-
Yeah, there's a, there's a, yeah, there's an attachment there. Sorry.
It's highlighted, so.
So you're eliminating the 5/8 inch rate and the 3/4 inch rate, and then replacing it with a 3/4 inch rate of 4171, and it'll mirror the previous recently deleted 5/8 inch rate?
So we will no longer have a $62.57 charge per a meter?
Yes.
We will go from 41 to 104.
Yes, that's correct.
So eliminating that in the billing software will eliminate any customers potentially having a problem for that?
Yes.
But just to make sure it's clear for our water customers that the rate is not going up. It's just a cleanup in the table.
Yes.
That the 5/8 inch is just being deleted out and being replaced with 3/4 inch, and the rates are actually the exact same.
Yes.
It's just for the meter size.
I will move to approve ordinance number 835-21 at an ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing authorization to amend Appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of ordinances by adjusting the water-based rate table to remove the 5/8 meter and setting the 5/8 inch base rate as the 3/4 inch base rate, providing for a penalty, a severability clause, and an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Item number 15, consider an act on items to be considered for the future council meetings?
On August the 10th, assuming I get a non-new revenue rate and a voter-approved rate from the Parker County Appraisal District, I would expect us to retake the tabled items as far as the tax rate and setting the public hearing goes. We will also get a financial update from Jake Weber on August the 10th as well. In addition to any other items that may come up or suggestions you guys have for, from tonight?
So Preston gave a lot of dates, and a lot of them were in the end of July, beginning of August, and some in the end of August. Should we go ahead and try to have another update from Preston on the completion of what he's calling the first piece, which is worth the Willow Park?
I can have him, we can have him come back if you'd like. I think-
I know we just had him, but it's, it is a critical piece.
Yeah, I mean, we'll know, I can do that.
24th. He could come back on the 24th.
And that way, he can give us a little bit better understanding of what's happening with the second leg, which is Willow Park to Hudson Oaks.
Which will be the-
He gave a 8/26 completion date.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather him come back on 24th because he can update both projects.
A little bit more.
Yeah, instead of the 10th. Does that, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no other items, we'll go to item 16.
Did you have something?
Can we go back to the consent agenda and approve the minutes? I think we missed that.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 13th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Lev. Item 16 is the next council meeting. It's August, Tuesday, August the 10th at 7:00 PM. Is that correct?
Well, we, we will have a few not be here. Is that correct? You-
Yep.
Are you out?
Traveling.
And you're out on the 10th?
Just three.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and council comments? I have nothing. Hope everybody's getting to take a vacation. Mr. Grimes?
Just want to commend Candy for doing yeoman's work.
Thank you, Candy.
In a, in a very, she got thrown into the deep end a little bit, but she assured me she can handle the city secretary job on an interim basis, so I want to thank her and Rose for both yoking up and pulling double duty. I'll tell you that those two ladies walk in the building every morning around 7:30, and they typically stay past 5:00, and so I'm appreciative of what they're doing to help fill the gap.
Okay, thank you. Any other council member comments? Okay, executive session, the city council may convene in executive session to conduct a private consultation with its attorney on any legally posted agenda item. When the city council seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with provisions of Chapter 551, including the following items: 551071 Texas government code consultation with the attorney. Following executive session, the city council may, will reconvene into regular session and may take any action deemed necessary as a result of the executive session. Could we clear the chambers, please? Thank you.